Hi, everyone. I would like to open the meeting and to do that, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley.
Here.
Mrs. Lavin.
Here.
Mr. Messinger.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
Mr. Parisi.
Here.
Mrs. Caffiello.
Here.
Mr. Escicola.
Here.
Now, we have a very special evening. And I for the life of me don't know why you're doing this, but you know, here we go. I believe you're coming in. Sean, can you administer the oath of office to Adam Weiss as the Manalton Township Representative? And to correct my sarcasm, it's a very, very satisfying position. Thank you, Mr. Samson.
Thank you. And as the board is well aware, that whenever there's a vacancy on the Board of Education, there's a process to go through to fill out a vacancy. So over the last couple of months, the district put out an advertisement in the Yasbury Park Press inviting members of the Manalton Township community to submit letters of interest to fill the vacancy for the Manalton Township Representative. Those letter of interest were shared with Board of Education, candidates were interviewed, and the culmination of that process is the swearing-in of a representative from Manalton Township, Sir Adam Weiss, so that he can take his seat at the dais and join Board of Education for the remainder of that term. So, Mr. Weiss, invite you to the podium.
Sean, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Before you do that, could Mr. Weiss introduce each member of his family?
Absolutely, absolutely. I can introduce them. My wife, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie.
My daughter, Lila.
Hi, Wes.
My daughter, Anna. And my daughter, Arianna.
You should be very proud of your death.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome.
So, Mr. Weiss, if you could take the oath of office?
All right. And now I'll raise my other hand as I do this one. I, Adam Weiss, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and obedience to the same and to the government established as the United States in this state under the authority of the people, so long we die. I, Adam Weiss, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1904-1, nor disqualified due to condition of a crime or offense listed in NJSI 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so long we die.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And congratulations to our board as an official member.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. I just want to thank really quickly, I just want to thank Mr. Mayor Susan Condon, Marion Musich, committee woman, and Larry Cooper. Larry Cooper, vice chair of the Manalton Township Speaker.
You just stole my thunder. I was going to thank him.
I also note that I think it says everything you need to know about the partnership with
the Manalton Township Council Committee when we've got so much representation here just to see what Mr. Weiss wanted. So, thank you. We always appreciate our partnership with the Manalton Township for this exception.
And I want to tell you one thing. I talk a lot, but you only have two more months of me. But, Mr. Weiss, we're quite pleased to have somebody with such qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much because I sure had a lot to learn, Mr. Samson still says I have a lot. You know, what can I tell you? It's okay. Yes.
I would take everybody's roll call.
Yes, let's do a roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Bruno, please. Mrs. Hagley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yeah.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Here.
Mrs. Caffiello.
Here.
Mr. Escicola.
Yes, here.
Okay. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We got ayes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank the gathering, and we're going into executive session. Announcement, announcement of that court notice of meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975. This meeting notice was sent to the Yasbury Park Press on September 21st, 2020, and has been duly advertised in the Yasbury Park Press issue of September 23rd, 2020. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on September 21st, 2020. Could we all stand for the collegial agents, please?
Hi, collegial agents. United States, United America, you're very welcome. For your second, my nation, our God, and your love, and your reason, and your soul.
I know it's an inconvenience for everybody to be wearing these things, and hopefully it's going to be, you know, a thing of short notice with vaccination or whatever and that happens, but I appreciate everybody doing it. Mr. Tascano, are there any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, there was, Mr. President. Just before going in, it was noted that for exception number seven, there were two additional items that were not on the script of the agenda that was available. They were Agency Reference Number 214/20 and a matter under document number M O N L 2968-1. Those are the two other items.
Thank you, Mr. Tascano. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2020? Regularly. Question? Discussion, anyone? Mr. Weiss, a roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
abstained.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Here.
Danny, I wasn't, okay, I wasn't so.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Caffiello?
Yes.
Mr. Escicola?
Yes.
Communications, communications are on file in the Office of the Board Secretary. Reports, I'd like to yield the floor to Mr. Samson, Alice, and then to you.
Thank you, Mr. Escicola, appreciate that. So, we're going to open this evening a little bit differently. We have our Support Staff Members of the Year here being recognized, and one of the things that we felt was important as, you know, as schools grapple with, you know, how to best address the COVID pandemic and what that means for us, it's still important to make sure that we are bringing people together in a responsible way, but certainly wanted to recognize the achievements of these individuals tonight. And I thank everyone for coming out. I know that this is the largest gathering we've had to date in person, so, you know, we feel good about our protocols and we feel good about bringing people together in person, and that's largely why we've been conducting our meetings in person since June. The way we're going to do this, usually, we stand up and I present the plaques and we say a little bit about each of the Support Staff Members, the Power Professionals of the Year. Tonight, we'll just do it a little bit differently. What I'll ask is when I call your name, if you could please stand, I'm going to just read a little bit about your achievements. Dr. Allen is going to operate Price is Right style and come over and bring your plaque to you, so nobody needs to leave their space, and we'll do it that way. And unfortunately, we're not going to engage in photo ops at this point in time, but we will certainly down the road. So, let me open this first and foremost, so everybody understands, this is an annual award where nominations are sought for individuals in the building, power professionals in the building who go above and beyond for the students that they serve. And usually, this is something that happens during this September Board meeting, but we pushed it back a little bit this year. And these are the folks who, you know, work with our neediest population, both in after-school recreational programs, extended school year programs, one-on-one, extra assistance, and obviously invaluable cox to the educational wheel here. So, first and foremost, I would like to recognize Donna Bartolomeo. Donna, please stand up. So, Donna has been an power professional at Foltz Lake High School for 11 years. She quickly became vested in the school, and I'm reading some of the highlights that folks have submitted on behalf of your recognition. She is more than deserving this recognition for outstanding work with the Learning and Language Disabled Program, where she provides academic, emotional, and behavioral support for students with cognitive impairments and special needs. She works and attends athletic events, participates in Cougar Connections, the Talent Show, Buddy Olympics, and this is only naming a few, and always goes above and beyond for all of her students, spends time with them at their activities, and always makes them feel unique and special. She has worked as a one-to-one power professional as well as a support person for students participating in the least restricted environment and assimilating into the general education electives, and helps all students focus on academics and social skills. Donna is enthusiastic, compassionate, collaborative, proactive, and most importantly, kind. She uplifts each student and helps them strive to be the best they can be. Donna, congratulations. Next, from Freehold High School, we have Chrisanne Erickson. Chrisanne? Chrisanne has been a power professional at Freehold High School for the past 12 years. Over the years, she has worked in numerous programs, supporting students in the Language and Learning Disabilities Program, Resource Room, and also as a job coach in the LLD Student Transition Employment Program. She's a valuable team member whose positive energy always contributes to an effective and productive educational environment, helping students achieve the most academic and personal success possible. One teacher stated, "Miss Erickson is an amazing person, has a tremendous work ethic, is incredibly kind, dependable, and relatable to all students, and every student loves her." She is an integral part of the Special Education Department of Freehold High School, and we are fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations. I don't think Nancy Lorenzo could be with us tonight, but I do want to just recognize her. So, Miss Lorenzo is the recipient from Freehold Township High School and has been a power professional at township for the past two years, and has worked in resource classes, supporting students in Spanish II, and most recently, as a one-to-one power professional within the PEP program. She serves as a translator role model for all students she works with, is always willing to help, is all, we appreciate her support translating constantly for the CST, making information accessible to non-English speaking students, has been a tremendous support for teachers, an advocate for students, and an overall pleasure to work with. She embraces each day with her students with incredibly positive attitude and smile. So, congratulations to Nancy, who is unable to attend this evening. Next, we have Michelle Clamford from Howe High School. Michelle has been a power professional at Howe High School for the past five years. She works with students in the Autism Spectrum Program. Michelle has demonstrated herself as a leader among her peers and advocates continuously for her students. She is dedicated to a profession empathetic, kind, and well liked by all students. She always puts the needs of her students first, is always willing to assist in multiple capacities, whatever is asked of her, works closely with the classroom teachers to meet all the educational, social, and behavioral needs of the students in her care. As a job coach, she assists students in the community with their job tasks and professional skills, and is an awesome ambassador to our community at large. The Howe High School team appreciates the compassion and care Michelle shows all of her students. Congratulations. From here at Manalton High School, Deborah Carrery. Thank you for that hometown cheer. Deborah has worked at Manalton High School for the past seven and a half years as a job coach and a power professional in the Regional Learning Academy. She is affectionately called Mom by her students enrolled in vocational assessment class. Deborah encompasses everything we expect from our staff. She supports students through empathy, example, and effort. She has served as a positive role model for her students as she prepares them for their future careers, always goes above and beyond for her students, and tries to personalize their job experience based on their specific interests. Students thrive under her guidance and learn how to persevere on many difficult tasks with her guidance and support. Deborah has made a difference in the lives of many students at Manalton High School, and we thank her for the quality, caring service that she gives our students and the enthusiasm she shows this place each and every day. Congratulations. Shari Squayoff from Marlborough High School. Shari has worked at Marlborough High School for the past five years as a one-to-one power professional. She is energetic, organized, helpful, flexible, always takes initiative. She always presents with an incredibly positive attitude and makes sure that each and every student and all program needs are met. She takes it upon herself to be sure she is familiar with the material and that all students in each class are embracing so that she can help each individual student. The work that she does to help students focus on what is important in the classroom and assist them in developing independent coping skills supports their success in all their academic pursuits. She consistently goes above and beyond to support the needs of her students, the staff, the administrators, and is an incredible asset and excellent ambassador to the Marlborough High School community. Congratulations, Shari. So, I just want to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. We appreciate it, and we felt that it was important to recognize you in person. It's videotaped, so it goes out to the larger community and not simply to send you a congratulatory note. So, my best to all of you, and I thank you for your continued efforts for students in this district. The Freehold Regional High School District obviously has a tremendous number of really varied programs with students with all sorts of needs, and I think that individuals that we're recognizing tonight are the way that we're able to meet those needs in an exceptional manner. So, thank you for your commitment to the students of this district. You are not a family if you walk out after receiving your year award. You do not have to stay here all, just, you're certainly welcome to, you do not have to. Congratulations. Thank you to our special ed supervisors for coming out this evening. I appreciate that. So, let me just move into the formal report at this point in time. So, obviously, the Freehold Regional High School District transition to what is known as the hybrid model this past Monday, so we're on day one. What that looks like, so individuals understand, is at this point in time, there are approximately 60% of our students engaging in in-person classes. They are in an A through L and an M through Z cohort. The A through L cohort goes Monday, Tuesday, and every other Wednesday. The M through Z cohort goes every other Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, partial days. That is the hybrid model that the district articulated at the start of the school year. We initially wanted to move forward with that, you know, come September 1st. Worked through the sort of cascading impact of how the state handled all of that, and were able to successfully begin to implement that this past week. Been out and about touring the buildings over the past couple of days. We were fortunate to be visited by the League of Innovative Schools who came over and shot some video at this high school, actually, just to see how it was going. I'm pleased with a couple of things. I was pleased with how we adapted to the remote learning. When we had to, it was very different than what we did in the spring. It's synchronous, it's class time. There is no difference between our hybrid model and our remote model in terms of the students being in the class. You're just either engaged with the class from home or in person here in the school. We feel good about how this week opened. We feel very good about our safety protocols that are in place, and for those of you who either attended the board meetings or listened to the board meetings over the past couple of months, or any of the updates, they've been pretty extensive, you know, starting with the HBAC and what that entails here, and the utilization where able of per 13 filters, but also that our HBAC system that we were able to upgrade through our Energy Savings Improvement Program in 2012 and 2013, and we did not certainly foresee a pandemic at the time, but that $20 million project that was done at no cost to the taxpayers has paid dividends through this difficulty, significant dividends through this difficulty. Because we replaced the number of our HBAC, large components of our HBAC infrastructure in a way that allows us to recycle the air for EBR units in a profound way. Some of the other things that we did that the public should know, every single classroom has installed a small exhaust fan that blows out, so that we are constantly taking the air from the filter, recycling that through and out. So, the air is recycled in each and every one of our classrooms multiple times a day. Every classroom is equipped with disinfecting wipes that are EPA approved, gloves for students who so wish to wear them. The workspaces of the faculty and staff are taped off to keep them between six and eight feet from any of the students. Obviously, anybody who walked in the building today sees all of the decals and the signage that's been placed across the buildings, the utilization of one-way hallways, the utilization of physical reminders to maintain social distancing. And so, all of that, I think, has allowed us to engage in as normal a return to school as possible given the circumstances. All of our athletic programs have been up and running from the start of the school year. Overall, we have had certain issues with a couple of teams. All of those were non-school related events that we quarantined out of an abundance of caution. Our fall athletics program has proceeded largely without any major hiccups. As we move to the winter, it will certainly be interesting. The winter athletics are supposedly a full go. There's not a lot of specific guidance out there yet on that. We will monitor that very closely. Our clubs and activities, our band, our drama clubs, all of those are up and running as well. We feel good about being able to provide all students as much of the comprehensive high school as we would have normally provided them. So, feel good about that. What we will do over the next several weeks, marking period one comes to an end around November 18th. We will watch this very closely. If we are able to in the coming weeks move our hybrid model to a full day, we will. We are certainly planned to do that. We have a, the delivery, the lunch is the difficulty with a full-day model. I will say that the building administrators, the principals, the central office administrators have been working together on a plan, obviously, all summer on this. Our plans are in place, and we will certainly feel confident in being able to do that, but we want to watch over the next couple of weeks, monitor closely community spread, see how the hybrid model goes. And then the next phase for the Freehold Regional High School District would be to stay in that hybrid model, but to move the hybrid to a full day. And that's the ultimate goal, but we want to make sure that we get the partial day hybrid model right and done well and done effectively. First, you know, I'm thankful for the faculty and staff, the teachers, the administrators here who have been very flexible through all this, who are finding ways to continually collaborate and improvise and do good things for children, right? And so, we want to make sure that pandemic or not, we're delivering quality instruction and a quality academic and social and emotional experience here at the Freehold Regional High School District as much as possible for these students. So, one day for hybrid, we will look out over the next several weeks. The next phase would be to move to a full-day hybrid model. We are not going to commit to a specific date at this point in time, but I do think it's important for the public to know, we do have a clear plan to do that, we do have a clear plan around lunch, and if conditions permit, we will do that. And so, that would be the next phase in all of this, and certainly to be continued. That concludes my report. Best, all.
Mr. Samson, I'd like to just add to that a little bit, that there were numerous last-minute changes by the governor's office, numerous times when directives weren't available, and the staff went through an awful lot of gyrations in trying to get everything done. And I wanted to thank the staff because I've never seen anything like it. I spent 40 years in public service, and it was quite an ordeal to get to this point. And let's just make it through, you know, safely as much as we can, and I appreciate everything that the staff of the school district did. At this point, we're on my here, we have the board reports, and we only had one, and that would be curriculum, and I know Mr. Messinger is going to be in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We had a brief meeting tonight before this meeting, and we first talked about the transition to the hybrid schedule, a lot of which Dr. Samson had talked about. And as we said before, this is synchronous, so the kids at home are learning alongside the kids in the classroom. Every child or student in the classroom has their laptop with them. And so far, students are doing a great job with safety compliance. There's requirements of the students. I viewed the video that went out from Marlborough. Every time a student comes into the room, they have to clean off their desk, and everyone, all the students seem to be doing a great job with that. And we also heard about a lot of the professional development that's still going on, because we're on a partial day schedule, but the staff doesn't just go home at 1:00 or whatever time the partial day ends, and that's the end of it. They're working a full day, and in addition to the professional development, they're also devoting 45 minutes per day for the students, because obviously, those kids who are at home missing out on the in-person component and may need some more help with their teachers. We then went on to talk about the magnet programs for 2021, the application process, that is. The open houses, obviously, are no longer in person, so instead, we've had live Q and A sessions via Zoom. Each of the programs has had meetings on different days, both at 4:00 and 7:00, and just last night, the business program had a Zoom call with over 100 participants on it. And in addition to the staff, there's also alums on there and also students. The application process for magnet programs, the process is closing on October 30th. The in-person assessments will occur in mid-December. Speaking about assessments, next week, we're going to have the PSATs for the juniors in the A through L cohort, after we had a successful implementation of the SATs for the seniors. And then also, switching gears to math, of course, we've talked about for several years how now geometry is going to be taught to the freshmen, whereas before, it used to be taught your sophomore year. So, our geometry first program is now two months old, and one of the other things we learned with these changes in math sequencing is that starting next year, there's going to be two new classes offered. there's going to be two new classes offered, there's going to be Algebra II applications, and then there's also going to be a quantitative reasoning class. And then finally, in response to a concern that Mr. Parisi had about outreach to the students who might be having mental health issues due to what's going on in the world and particularly with their education, Dr. Sampson pointed out that there is continued outreach by the staff in the building, and actually, each and every student in this district has had a one-on-one meeting with their guidance counselor. So the staff and administration is particularly attuned to all the potential issues that may involve students' mental well-being during this crazy time we're all experiencing. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger. Mr. Boyce, do you have any changes to the agenda which you would like to know?
I do. There are three changes, one correction, one amendment, one addition. So the correction is under item G13, approval of sixth-period teaching assignments. The first name on that list reads Kevin Hart from Folsneck High School, English teacher. That should read Kevin Heine, H-E-I-N, so you can make that change on your agenda. The next is G15, which is approval of substitute personnel. Please add to that list James Lee, a teacher, effective October 23, 2020. And finally, a new item, G17, approval of per diem rates for substitute staff. And it reads, be resolved that the following daily rate for substitute teachers be approved effective October 19, 2020, as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Substitute teacher staff will read $110 per day. And that's the only amendment that had to be done.
Okay, Mr. Boyce, as you know, we're undergoing a whole different type of meeting at this point. Did you receive any public comments electronically?
No, I did not.
Okay, so at this point, we do have a person who has an as to address with a public comment, and that would be Donna Calosi from, I can't, oh, Freehold. Could you come to the podium and just say your name properly? I'm sorry for pronouncing it.
Hi, I'm Donna Calosi. I'm Freehold Township resident, my students, my children grow to Freehold Township High School. I agree, the opening of school was wonderful. My kids went back yesterday for the first time, came home smiling, were happy. My son says it's the most he's learned since school has started. And he's an AP and honor student, so he was thrilled. My daughter was happy. We're looking forward to going back today. The only thing I'd like everyone to understand is that, you know, we have some children sitting in a classroom alone. And while I understand we're hybrid, I think there also has to be exceptions to the rule. No child should sit in a classroom alone. My daughter's in a resource room, and she sits in two classes alone. Now, on other days, there's students there, and I get numbers and space. But if there's one or two students on other days, I think we need to worry about that social, emotional piece of a 15-year-old sitting in a classroom by herself. So as we move forward, and I keep saying to her, like, you know, second marking period is going to bring new students back. I know a lot of their friends plan to come back second marking period. But again, I think it's something we sometimes overlook. I mean, I work in schools too. I get it, we're going through the same thing as we were trying to bring our kids back in November. But we're trying to meet the needs of students academically, socially, and emotionally. So as we go, we hopefully, to that next phase, I just ask that we look at that, you know, that we look at that in general and make those choices that are not only best academically, but the social, emotional piece too. And I applaud you for bringing them back. You know, I was here in August and really wanted them back. I worked from home today myself, it was the first time since March that I was alone in my house. It was wonderful. My principal, I work in Marlborough, was like, I get it, stay home, enjoy yourself, you know, do your meetings from home. And that's what I did. Knowing that they're back and they're coming home with smiles on their face versus being in their bedrooms made the world of difference for them too mentally. And I applaud you for getting them back. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sampson, for raising those points because we will, I'll definitely take a look at that because those are, you know, so obviously, as the dust settles over the first couple of weeks of this, one of the things that we did, you know, we obviously divided the cohorts and then certain numbers, and now, you know, we'll dive into some of those individual classrooms and take a look at that concern. We're glad to have them back too. You know, our goal here is to get back. I mean, that's what it's been, and we're committed to that. And, you know, I was at work since March, so fortunately, it was my wife who dealt with four kids on devices all day long while she was teaching, and then she's actually been back in person since August 24, full classes in our district. So it's, you know, I escaped that by coming to work. I understand that completely, and we'll certainly take a look at some of those smaller classes and what that looks like.
Before we move forward, and I want to get the meeting over quickly, I know, but I want to thank you really for showing the interest in your own child. My child was born, I only have one, 25 years ago, and I think my whole life changed. Everything is focused on my child, who's now 25 years old and on his own. And it's the parents that make the difference in the child's life, and I appreciate your comments. Believe me when I say that. And Mr. Sampson and I have probably been in contact on a daily basis, trying to work all of this out, and it hasn't been an easy time. So I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Okay, now we come to the part of, and I have the motion to approve G1 through K3.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, Mr. Boyce? Mr. Bruno?
Yes, I have this thing from Dr. Sampson, G-K1. That's all building. Everything else, yes.
Mr. Weiss?
I'm staying on everything.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes, except I abstain on G8, referring to Brian Provo, G16 on the FRE contract, J8 on Christopher Provo, and K1 on Dr. Sampson and myself on a few others.
Mrs. Lattin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, and I'm staying on K1 on myself.
Mrs. Cappiello?
Yes, on everything, except G16, I abstain. And I just wanted to make a comment. I abstain only because I have a conflict of interest, and I wanted to just express my thanks to the staff, all the teachers, everything that you've done to our students all along, but especially in this difficult time. And I also abstain on K1 for Dr. Sampson.
And Mr. Estetol? Yes, and Mr. Weiss abstained on everything, and I just wanted to tell you why. It's his first day on the board, and that's why he had to do that. And thank you, Mr. Weiss, for coming on board.
Thank you.
Is there any old business that the board wishes to discuss? Any new business? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Hashi is adjourned the meeting. And the second, can I do that this time?
I have been Mr. Bruno, that's me.
Oh, okay.
I think we still need a second.
Yeah, that's what I said, a second.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, so there we go. Okay, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.